Hello and welcome back to my ongoing coverage of the Ocean Gate Titan Submersible Tragedy. This video covers the first half of the testimony of Carl Stanley, owner of the Roatan Institute of Deep Sea Exploration. Mr. Stanley was one of those who dove in Titan during its first crude dives in 2019 in the Bahamas, when Titan had its first hull iteration. In this first half of his testimony, we hear about his background, which, believe it or not, centers around building and operating unclassed submersibles. And so we learn how this brought him to meetings Stockton Rush, and how, in exchange for free labor, Mr. Stanley would get a seat aboard Titan when it was ready to dive. We then hear how his opinion of Stockton Rush changed after he finally did get his dive, and what he learned about the Ocean Gate CEO subsequently. I will keep this brief, as seen as this is a two-parter, I will keep most of what I have to say until the very end. And part two is already completed, and will be live a day or two after this one. I do just quickly want to say, though, that I really appreciate each and every one of you who has watched my videos and subscribed to this channel, bringing it to now over 3,000 subscribers, which is honestly, hand on heart, not a number I ever expected I would see. I really do appreciate all of your support, and it keeps me making the best videos I possibly can for you. So, an enormous thank you to you all. It really does mean a lot to me. But enough rambling for now. Let's just get into this video and hear the testimony given at the U.S. Coast Guard's public hearing by Carl Stanley.
Mr. Stanley, thank you for being here. You've been here for a majority of this testimony at this board. So when I ask a question, all of my questions will be framed of what you knew leading up to the events that transpired on the accident day, June 18th, 2023, unless I specifically ask you otherwise.
Okay.
So we're going to cover two topic areas. The first is your experience and work history related to submersible operations, the background and history with your submersible operation, the role of classification societies in what I will call tourist submersibles or submersibles that engage in oceanographic research but may carry passengers. And then the oversight, regulatory oversight for submersibles that you might be aware of. The second topic area, we will talk about your interaction with Mr. Stockton Rush and personnel that may work for Ocean Gate. So that'll be the second area. So if you would, just take your time and explain your background and training that relate to submersible operations.
So the way that I got into this whole line of work is I read a book when I was nine years old, and it was a short story written by a veteran for his own children that turned into a little series of books. And from the 50s, I was just recently able to, a friend tracked it down for me. And at that age, when you say you want to do something like that, adults are encouraging. And I kind of took them seriously slash was gullible enough and started researching how to make a submersible. And going to the library, I traveled when I was old enough, I think at the age of 14, I took the train into New York, saw submarines on display at International Underwater Contractors, told them what I wanted to do. They lent me tools, allowed me to dissect parts, and I was taking notes. When I saw the bathysphere at Coney Island, I remember I wasn't old enough to drive. I had to take my bicycle and I went to my local American Bureau of Shipping office and got a copy of the rulebook and started looking through that. And from saving money mostly of scooping ice cream and working at a bagel shop, when I was 15, I had the first piece of steel delivered to my parents' backyard in New Jersey and hired a welder for one day to give me professional demonstration. But I had already done some studying on how to weld and then started at it. And by the time I was, the same week I graduated college was the same week that that submarine named Seabug made its maiden voyage. And this sub, it carried myself and one passenger to a max of 725 feet, but the majority of the dives that I did with it were to 500 feet. I started very methodically diving. The first dive that it did was in a creek near my campus, Eckerd College, where the EXR, which stands for Eckerd College Search and Rescue Team, was standing by with scuba divers when I did the first dive in the creek to maybe 10 feet. And then I was using it on the Gulf side of Florida, so you can't get very deep there. The deepest I ever got was 90 feet by Fort De Soto, which was actually, looking back, a terrible choice. It was high currents and poor visibility in a shipping lane, but allowed me to test it to 90 feet. That was my first interaction with the marine authorities, coincidentally. So I was already aware that of the regulations. I mean, we're going back to the early 90s or mid 90s now. But I specifically kept that vehicle under 12 feet, and I didn't put motors on it until I took it out of the country. And so I registered it, but in terms of regulation, I was trying to keep it in the same category as a canoe or kayak. And that's actually how the authorities treated it when I was in Florida. I did 49 dives with it in the state of Florida. I took it to the other side of the state and was using it. There's a little stretch between West Palm to Fort Lauderdale area that I did. Most of the dives there started at 200 feet, 400 feet, got to 600 feet, was diving. And so the way I was doing it, you know, I had to get miles and miles offshore. I would go to boat clubs and dive clubs, and I would give an actual slideshow with slides and give a little spiel of if you have a boat and you're willing to tow me miles offshore, I'll take you down in my sub. And so no money was changing hands. You know, if the authorities questioned us, which they did quite often, we could honestly say, like, you know, who's chartering who here? We both showed up with our boats and we're having recreational activity. And they, I remember one time, and this is pre-9/11, but they were extremely, they wanted to stop me from diving. And they had, I want to say Coast Guard, Sheriff, and some other kind of patrol, three different boats, guns drawn, telling me I can't get on the sub. And it was about two hours that they had us detained before they said, yeah, we've been patched through the Coast Guard headquarters, and this is basically under 12 feet and doesn't have a motor, and go ahead. So at that point, so I also, it never started out as a business. It started, you know, as an idea I had in my head when I was nine years old. And there were no submersible charter operations in the world at that time. So I didn't even have a model to look at in terms of knowing where it was going to lead. And when I graduated, I had the goal of, I had some money saved from a business, and I had the goal of diving it as much as I could for that summer. And if I couldn't figure out a way to make a go of it and have it be generating income, I was basically going to throw in the towel and say, well, you know, I tried for a summer and that was that. But I had it on display at a dive show called Ocean Fest, and it was there that I met Man with a Resort in Roatan, which is the island where I've lived for the last 26 years. And that's how I ended up getting into the tourist submarine business. But even when I went down to Roatan, I didn't really, you know, I was only charging at first $125 a person, and I could only carry one person at a time. And it wasn't, it was just barely maintaining. It wasn't, it wasn't a very, you know, it wasn't going to provide a livelihood, but it was an exciting, interesting thing to do at the time. And then I left Roatan after two years of doing that and completing more than 400 dives to go into a charter for a Canadian company that was the first one to get permission from the Cuban government to look for Spanish galleons in front of Havana. And because they were a Canadian company, they had a better relationship with the Cuban government. They hired me, and it was supposed to be for two months, but it ended up being for six months. And with that sub, I surveyed the entire area in front of Havana from 130 feet to 500 feet, two miles to either side, on 20-foot depth transects. And after that job was done, they dropped me back in the Florida Keys, and I had a decision to make. And I decided, maybe I should build a bigger sub and go back to Roatan and make a better business out of this. And in the effort of doing that, I drove cross-country. I had never been to the West Coast before. And there's a lot of submersible expertise on the West Coast. I met with Graham Hawkes, I met with Will Cohen, I met with Doug Privet, I met with this guy, Sivertz, I forget his first name, but he had a sub that was uncertified, that he was doing outfall inspection for LA County for many years with, called Snoopur. Saw his operation. And I stopped and saw friends and, you know, I made a big trip out of it. And in between New Orleans and New Mexico, I had nowhere really to stop. And somebody that I had had a brief encounter with on my dock years earlier, and I had mentioned that I had the idea of building another submarine one day, lived in Oklahoma. And he had told me, well, if you ever think you're really going to build another sub, stop by, I have a machine shop, and I might help you out. And I was like, so passing between that big distance, I was like, well, I'll check this guy out. And literally showed up unannounced in Idabel, Oklahoma, looked up Buck Hill, and turns out he has the, he's the second or third largest employer in the entire county, has a very impressive facility where he makes solid rubber tires that ship around the world, some of which maybe only one would fit on the back of an 18-wheeler. And he, I mean, he makes them from scratch. He brings in raw, un-vulcanized rubber and sheets of steel, and turns out a finished product that's in demand around the world. And so he obviously had a lot of machining capabilities and contacts in the town. The first day I was there, he took me to go meet the mayor. The mayor said, this is an exciting project. What can we do to help? He took me to go meet a friend that had an airport hangar that wasn't being used, agreed to rent it to me for $100 a day. The cost of living was extremely low. There was a lake the next town over that was 200 feet deep where I could do my testing. And I was like, well, that's, this is the perfect spot. This is where I'm going to build my sub if I decide to do that. And I went to the West Coast, met with all those people. And so the, my front passenger sphere is upcycled from the same Perry Submersible that is one year, was built one year before I was born, the PC 1503, which is basically Antipodes and Idabel have, they're kind of sisters. They came from parts from the same original vessel. And I don't remember exactly how Stockton and I met, but I'm sure that was critical to the, how we ended up, you know, starting to talk and like that. So basically, I holed up in this airport hangar in Oklahoma for a year and a half, literally rolled out of bed in the morning and got to work on this sub. Didn't really have any distractions. I only left the state, I think, once in the year and a half. And after a couple test dives in the lake, shipped it down to Roatan and have been, that was 21 years ago. Since then, I've done, in this vehicle, over 1,840 dives.
So I'm going to ask the recorder to pull up Coast Guard Exhibit 084-TAC-1, which is a series of images and specifications for the vessels that you have been involved with, sir. And I just want to look at the top image on the first page. And I believe that's the first vessel that you were involved with.
Yes, so the first one there is Seabug, and that stands for Controlled by Buoyancy Underwater Glider. And part of my design criteria were keeping it as lightweight as possible. So this, I built, I kept track of every dollar that I spent on that sub. I had that thing operational for right at $20,000, which with inflation, probably you're talking double or triple, at least now. But right off the bat, when I got the ABS book, so I mean, I did my due diligence and looked at the rules and looked at all the other vehicles and studied how to do it properly from a mechanical standpoint, obviously. Certification was not an option for me straight off the bat for two main reasons. One, this vehicle is incredibly small. It only displaces 22, 2300 pounds, which is similar to displacement of one-person articulated diving suits. The hatch was only 18 inches in diameter, and the main body is 24 inches in diameter. There's an ABS rule that your hatch has to have three feet of freeboard.
Can I ask you to use the laser pointer to, you know, you're talking about different components, so maybe if we run this screen here.
So that's the hatch, and these are the wings. And the passenger would get, only the middle tower opened, and the passenger would get in first, lie down, get into the back, and then I would get in and seal the hatch. And that accomplished a couple things. One, you had one less sealing surface to worry about, and you didn't have to worry about your passengers if they sealed the hatch or not. And two, it kept the hatch opening in the center of the entire vehicle, and the wings actually made it very stable, and I was able to safely get people in and out of there in even six-foot seas.
Ballast is important to submersible operations. Can you use the pointer and point to where the ballast systems are?
So this vehicle had six ballast tanks. Each one of these covers is one. And you were able to control your pitch roll and overall buoyancy all independently using different valves inside, and that's where you got the gliding. And I would note that this is also the world's first gliding submersible ever made. And both Graham Hawkes and Phil Newton, after this, had gliding submersibles. And even DARPA now recently came out with a large manta ray-looking gliding unmanned vehicle.
And later on, we'll talk about Mr. Hawkes. But do you know his professional affiliation with company?
I know that he was originally supposed to be a third partner, and him and Stockton basically had a falling out over how much he was going to get paid. But he unquestionably has the most experience making composite pressure vessels for human occupancy, and that was obviously a huge error in judgment.
Composite vessels for human occupancy, are you talking about carbon fiber and other non-traditional construction materials such as titanium and steel?
Composite would refer, I mean, glass reinforced fiber, fiberglass, carbon fiber. As we've heard, the, there were diving suits that had fiberglass components. And Roy Thomas spoke about vehicles that have been classified in other countries that have had composite construction for components.
And then you mentioned the articulated diving suit, one-person diving suit. Are you talking about where the wear gets into a large structure that has joints where they can move? It's not a traditional wet suit or anything like that, is it?
Yeah, they're one atmosphere. I mean, they're essentially one-person submersibles with, that you almost wear. But from, I mean, from a design perspective, they basically are submersibles.
So if you'll scroll down, Lieutenant Steele. In the, in the bottom, we see another submersible. What are we looking at here?
This is my, the vehicle I operate now. She's named Idabel after the town in Oklahoma. And it has, the large forward sphere is the one that came out of the Pisces sub, which held the compressed gas for the divers to lock out on. And it's made out of HY100, which is one of the approved steels. Actually, the U.S. Navy was making their own submarines out of that steel. They developed that steel for U.S. Navy submarines. And the two spheres in the back are 516 grade 70, which is your most common pressure vessel steel. And they're nowhere near as strong as the HY100, but they, you can't really even, people aren't even manufacturing HY100 anymore in this country. So the passengers are in the front compartment, looking out of the big window, and I'm standing up behind them. So the passengers, they have the best view, and they can see up better than I can, but I have complete situational awareness, which, you know, many times there's been an animal 50 feet. I also have 11 lights on the sub, and where I'm diving, the water is incredibly clear. I routinely see the surface from 500 or 600 feet. So, you know, I sometimes spot animals 100, 200 feet away and am able to then drive the vehicle and show the customers that.
So if you would take the laser pointer and point to the forward passenger observation dome?
There.
Yes, what is that fabricated from?
That's cast acrylic. At the, there's, at any given time, there's only two or three companies in the world that make those. And that was, that is a spare for the Beaver Submersible, which I also went to go see. That's now in a museum in the Panhandle of Florida. And I tracked that window down through Andre's Galerne that had International Underwater Contractors in a warehouse in New York and got it for a couple thousand dollars because they were never going to use it. And actually, between the front sphere and that window and the amount of water that I have to launch in at the end of this dock, those were some of my defining design criteria.
And when you tracked down that sphere, that dome, did it come with certification as to its depth rating capacity?
It was originally certified. So the thing with those windows is the semispherical windows basically expire after 20 years from the date of being manufactured. And the number one thing that breaks down a window like that is UV radiation. And I feel very comfortable using that window because it was literally in the box that it was originally shipped in. And it receives, the only UV radiation it receives is when I'm driving in and out for 10 minutes because as soon as I come to the dock, not only is my dock covered with a roof, but I've made a custom fiberglass cover that slips over that, and no sunlight touches it.
If we could go to the next page in the lower left corner, there are some, these are publicly available specifications for your vessel. And down in the lower left, it talks about safety features. You'll see them on the screen, sir.
Yeah, I can, I can read them better here.
Okay. Could you talk about the safety features?
So in terms of methods to achieve positive buoyancy, my sub would have the exact same things that Patrick Leahy was talking about the other day. Like both Idabel and a Trident sub have two ballast compartments, independent high-pressure air sources, and, well, and a drop weight, and the ability to power themselves to the surface using the motors. And in addition to that, well, one thing my sub has actually that most subs don't have is the fully redundant propulsion systems because something that's fairly unique about my operation is I don't use a surface boat of any kind for support. But the downside of that is that if I had, say, a motor fail and the wind was blowing me towards the reef, potentially I could get washed up on the reef before a boat that I would call for assistance could tow me back in. And so because of that, I have completely, I have four motors for main propulsion with separate battery banks and completely independent wiring so that any component can fail and I can still come in on my own power.
So I've looked at an nautical chart of where you operate. So from your dock to get out to deep water where you conduct the majority of your dives, how far is that in terms of time that you're underway to get there?
It's, well, distance-wise, it's 800 to 1,000 feet, and time, depending on the sea state, eight to 12 minutes.
You can take that down. Thank you, Lieutenant. So some general questions about your experience as a submersible operator and pilot. So are you aware of any formal training available for submersible pilots?
It's, seems to be mostly by the manufacturers. I know that Trident has like an in-house simulator. I actually recently, well, last year, I was in Curacao, and I went down in both of the subs they had there, and I was actually on a training dive with somebody that was paying for one of their courses. So yes, I'm aware.
Do you know if the formal training for submersible pilots offers at the completion of the training, certification, like a certificate saying that you've completed that training?
In the case of a Curacao, yes, in, or U-boat works, I would imagine Trident gives you a certificate.
So you, you mentioned the hull portion of the Idabel that carries your passenger. Can you talk about the, the area where you, as the operator, sits? And that, is that a separate pressure vessel?
No, it's all connected. It's three spheres. And the best way to think of it is kind of like a snowman sitting down. There's a small, medium, and large, and it makes an L. And I'm, I'm actually standing in the rear, and I have a little board that I can pop out and I lean against, but it's better to be able to, be able to keep turning around and have situational awareness.
And are all those spheres made of the same material?
No, the, the front one is the HY100, and the two in the rear are the 516 grade 70. And then there's a forged ring connecting the two largest spheres that's four inches by four inches, weighs about 400 pounds, and has a 24-inch opening.
So you talked about the number of test dives. Were, were any material testing, was any material testing done on the hulls after they were assembled?
Only, well, I've personally taken the sub down 2,660 feet, which is plus 33, plus .33, ABS standards is .25. And the deepest dive I offer tourists is 2,000.
So there was no unmanned pressure testing conducted?
I didn't have the budget for that. And it would have also been, at this point, you know, I would have to ship it all the way back to Maryland.
And that would be the deep ocean test facility?
Correct.
So in general, would you describe the Idabel as a commercial vessel?
Yes.
And then what do you call the people that go on your excursions on the Idabel?
Passengers. I would also note, I've had a lot of scientists. There's no question I've done real science. I've had, I mean, I've had a fish named after Idabel that I discovered, a new species of fish. I've had the curator of mollusks from the Natural History Museum do multiple dives with me, specialists in deep-sea coral, many papers published, worked in conjunction with Schmidt Ocean Institute. worked in conjunction with Schmidt Ocean Institute. And I don't give away dives to scientists. They're customers like everybody else. I mean, I'm providing a service and they're, and that really has been the way that submersibles have operated. It's only recently that, now that these submersibles are mostly being operated by billionaires on their yachts, that the billionaires are courting scientists and, which has actually devastated funding for other subs that relied on scientists' money that were, for example, the Hawaiian Undersea Research Lab or the Johnson Sea Links. Because when you have a billionaire saying, hey, come on my yacht, my chef's going to cook you food. You have a private cabin and a hot tub because they want the tax breaks. You could have a 500-foot yacht and if you have a scientist on board that published a paper, now all of a sudden, everything was a tax write-off. So to some extent, Stockton was really just looking around and seeing what other people were doing and playing the game. But, I mean, obviously, the way he set emissions, you know, I don't agree with the terminology, mission specialist. But by giving scientists dive time, this is something that's being done across the industry now, which is a relatively new phenomenon. But it's not something that I do. I charge scientists.
And you mentioned you don't agree with the term "mission specialist." Why not?
I, I mean, it's clearly a dodge of trying to get around U.S. regulations with passengers. I think Guillermo's testimony made that perfectly clear.
Do passengers on the Idabel, do they sign waivers?
No.
Why is that?
I would use the cliche of we're all in the same boat together. And the, A, I feel extremely safe going in my vessel. B, the scenario where they would be injured or perish and I won it is even more of an outlier and I honestly don't see it as a good use of my time.
So does the government of Honduras offer registate, registration or flagging of a vessel such as the Idabel?
Yeah, my, my subs have always been registered in Honduras. I would also note that I've had 200 presidents down in my sub, subs, well, in Idabel as VIPs, as well as a vice president. There, there was one dive I had the acting president and he wanted to bring his bodyguard. And then the vice president spoke up and I ended up taking, you know, first and second in chain of command on one dive.
Did you charge those government officials?
I didn't, I didn't charge them.
So at any time, does the government of Honduras inspect the Idabel?
They have inspected it.
And do they use any kind of inspection standards? In other words, at one time, you mentioned your first vessel. It was a certain length, so it would be classed in a certain un-motorized, I'm paraphrasing, you said, a canoe.
They're mostly concerned with overall size and tonnage. That's what kind of motors, how powerful they are, basic information. I mean, I think it's important to keep in mind that the majority of the world's countries have never had a submersible operate from them, maybe visit them on a, on a boat, but to be based out of. I mean, south of the United States, in the entire Western Hemisphere, there's my own, my operation, the two subs in Curacao, and there was one in Costa Rica, which is no longer operating. And there's one that the Argentina Coast Guard has. That's it for the whole rest of the Western Hemisphere. So it's not really a major concern for most of the countries.
So what, what's the inspection interval by Honduranian government officials? Is it annual or?
It's, you know, I have to renew my registration every year, sometimes two years. It's, it's actually sporadic.
So it's not on a fixed schedule?
I would say a lot of government functions in Honduras are a bit sporadic.
So has the, the government in Honduras or any other government ask you to participate in like drills or exercises that would be, so that those forces could assist you if you had a dive emergency at depth?
No, but they have asked me to, and I have participated in helping them look for missing persons. And I actually retrieved a missing person. That wasn't at the government's request, but the, the widow's request and found her dead husband and brought him back up.
So if you did get in distress in the submersible, where would be the nearest, and I'm talking about at a considerable depth, where is the nearest rescue for, yeah, rescue asset such as another submersible or ROV?
More than 72 hours.
So now I want to turn your attention to your experience with Ocean Gate. So in general, could you just talk about your experience and your interaction with Ocean Gate since you became aware of the company and, and when that was? And just give us this, you know, general overview?
So I was looking back through all my emails and my relationship with Stockton goes back at least 10, possibly up to 15 years. Definitely Pete Hoffman, that he's basically the one that parted out the Perry 1503 and built Antipodes in his garage. He, he was a close friend of mine. He, he came down to Honduras and took a dive with me. I think it was the last sub dive he ever did. And he, he was probably instrumental in connecting Stockton and I. But I think we also saw each other regularly at the meetings in New Orleans, underwater intervention that Will Cohen chairs. That's really been the only and the largest gathering of industry professionals that I've been going to for years. And, you know, I went out to Washington. I did, I saw Antipodes. I did a dive in Antipodes with Stockton and Puget Sound. And when I learned that he was making a carbon fiber sub, I, I was excited about it. I thought that, you know, that it was, there, people have been, even the Navy, actually mostly the Navy, has been making tests and publishing papers on the possibility of composite pressure vessels for decades, maybe even 40, 50 years. And composite technology has gotten a lot better in 40 or 50 years. And even back then, the test results they were getting were in, very encouraging with basically rudimentary fiberglass. And so when I heard he was doing something out of carbon fiber, I told him, you know, I want to, I want to be a part of that. I, I saw that as an opportunity to dive deeper than I probably would have ever gotten to dive again. And I went out to Washington and I gave him a, a week of free labor, working on the first version of the launch and recovery vehicle. Well, not free, it was an, with the understanding that one day somewhere, when the carbon fiber vehicle was done, that I was going to get a ride, which is basically what happened.
And then what, and then what happened in your relationship with Ocean Gate?
Well, you know, so, I mean, I basically just got an email from him out of the blue saying, this is your chance, come to the Bahamas, and I did. And we dove to over 12,000 feet. And there were, there were around 30 people there. There, Renato was there. There were a lot of other mission specialists in waiting that were clearly eager to go. And my, they were basically, you know, I was there about a week. And we had this whole small resort rented out in Marsh Harbor. Stockton and I were staying in the same house with, with, they also, so they had the whole resort filled up. And then they had a bunch of extra houses that rented out. And actually, I slept outside in a hammock. But the, you know, we would have meals together. And when we went out, it was Stockton, myself, pet, pet, I'm not sure how to say his name, but he was, he's, he was in his early twenties and he was a sonar technician for a third-party supplier, I believe. And he, his duty was something like calibrating the sonar. And then it was a friend of Stockton from childhood who was, I believe, the COO on the company. And he told us to, to be prepared for noises. And he had recently done the solo dive on his own. And basically just said, you know, this is going to make noise and brace yourselves. And do, do you guys have the, the acoustic emissions, real-time monitoring graph for, for that dive? Has that surfaced at all?
Excuse me, can we just specify which timeframe at all of what we're discussing?
April of 2018.
That was the first Titan Hull.
The first hull, yeah.
I don't believe we have that as exhibits, sir, the acoustics for that hull.
Yeah, I would be very curious to see that if you ever come across it in your investigation. But the.
April of 2018?
I believe so.
2019.
Well, I mean, we need to figure that out, right?
Right. Could that have been April 2019, sir?
What's the page one? Yeah, I'm sorry, 2019. You're right.
So if you would, continue. Now, you're, you were just speaking about the sonar tech and, and the, those test dives.
Yeah.
Continue, please.
So there were four of us in there. And in retrospect, there were a lot of red flags that now, after the implosion and learning more and putting different pieces of the puzzle together, start making sense and are kind of clues. But, so there are four of us in there. Obviously, there could have been five. There are many people back on shore that would have eagerly, you know, he would have been appeasing customers waiting to go, filling that fifth seat. But there was only the four of us. And it made a lot of noise. And when we got down there, and another clue in retrospect is he, we didn't tow out, it's, it's, it's a fairly gentle sloping bottom. We had to go much farther offshore than I would need to go that deep off of Roatan. I mean, we were probably 10 or 12 miles offshore. And he chose to stop the towing a little shallow. We could have easily gone a little deeper and that would have been a better test. But I think that was an indication of his lack of faith in that, that vessel. And when we got down there, he didn't do any of the driving in my recollection. He immediately, I believe I was the first one to drive, but he basically insisted. It was his idea, nobody asked to drive, had each of us drive. And I think that was his kind of sick way of, if we had imploded, we were a little bit in control of our own destiny. Because when we were driving, we were needing to go towards deeper water to, I mean, the idea was really we were trying to get to the exact depth of the Titanic to confirm the hull was safe for that depth. And, you know, he knew at that point what the cross-section of the hull looked like. He knew that it had been hit by lightning. He knew that his engineer had quit, that would refuse to go in it, that the lockridge was refusing. You know, I didn't know any of these things.
Are you basing that on testimony that you have viewed here at the?
Wired magazine articles, talking to other people involved in the, I mean, things I've learned in the last year.
Uh, Ocean.
So I think that would be important to understand if Mr. Stanley's talking about conversations he had with Mr. Rush at the time, or if this is being now, after, there's been obviously a lot of information.
So, yeah, Mr. Stanley, just to clarify, you're making that position.
From things I've learned after the implosion. These are things that Rush never told me.
Yes, sir, and it's from social media and media reports.
And being here and talking to people directly.
Understand.
Yeah, so if you could just limit to your answers to the timeframe before the accident occurred on June 18th, of what you knew then?
Okay. So we got down there and it's, it's making noises that, you know, the sound of a carbon fiber band breaking when it's in a five-inch thick matrix is a lot of energy being released. And we were all clearly a little disnerved, but he had warned us. And I think nobody wanted to be the one to, you know, say they wanted to go up first. But I remember that at one point when I was driving, the bottom was a very gentle slope and you didn't have a compass in front of you. The compass was on the screen, I believe. And you were actually able to drive to deeper water. And the window was a little distorting in terms of being able to tell the, the slope on the bottom. But you could actually drive to deeper water by, the cracking sounds would amplify when you got deeper. And at some point, I don't remember who, we were all like, well, that's probably close enough. We've been down here long enough and we went back up. And what I wrote him in the emails and which is even more concerning than the cracking sounds that happened on the way down or while we were at the bottom, is that there was a, kind of like a grand finale of cracking sounds as we were getting close to the surface, which I'm not a carbon fiber expert, but just thinking about it logically, the only way that you get a whole lot of more cracking when you're coming back up is that material degraded so much that it stored energy that was then released as the pressure was released. And, you know, that's what I wrote him in the email. And. So I'm not allowed to talk about the 11 square feet of, of visible delamination that is now on the public record?
Well, we're focusing right now on what you knew up to the 18th of June, the accident day in 2023.
Okay, well, I didn't know about, all I knew at that point was what I heard. And that was enough for me to write these emails. I hadn't seen anything, I hadn't been told anything. And just off of that information, you know, how many emails back and forth over more than a year?
So you had mentioned a lightning strike. Did Mr. Rush or anybody at Ocean Gate prior to your dive on that Titan Hull, did they tell you that there was a lightning strike in the vicinity of the Titan Hull in the Bahamas?
I don't believe so. I think the first time I heard of a lightning strike was reading about it.
Do you know the damage a lightning strike will do to a vessel?
I'm sure it would be extensive, especially to a carbon fiber hull that's conductive.
If you had known that, would you have gone on the test dive?
No. If I had known there had been, there's a lot of things that if I had known, I wouldn't have gone. People have told me that I was, you know, stupid, naive. But really what it came down to was, at that point, I had no reason to believe that Stockton was a liar. And I had no evidence of any lies on his part. And when he said that he did a proper amount of testing and, you know, he's a trained engineer, he's not an idiot, he's got this whole organization behind him. It didn't, a lot of the things I've learned in the last 18 months or whatever have been very shocking.
So you mentioned the sound of carbon fiber snapping or breaking in a five-inch-thick carbon fiber hull. How do you know what that sound sounds like?
Because I was there and I heard it.
Well, I mean, how did you identify that it was the sound of carbon fibers snapping?
You could even localize where it was coming from. You could even localize where it was coming from. We were hearing it so often that the first couple of times, it was, you know, disnerving. And then, when it kept happening, I remember I was the one that was able to isolate the area where it was coming from and told them, "This is the area," and was listening right there. It's also a clue to me about Stockton's psychology in terms of, I mean, I tested both my vehicles myself, solo. I've heard things underwater. But to be two miles underwater by yourself in something that you know your engineer wouldn't go in, you know was hit by lightning, and you've seen a cross-section of that hull. That's, he was scared. Because if he wasn't scared, he would have already isolated where the noises were coming from on his first dive. When I isolated the area, that was new information to him. But he was down there by himself scared, and he kept going. That, to me, is not somebody with a, you know, I have a high tolerance to risk. I've done a lot of adrenaline-seeking activities, but that's, I don't believe, normal behavior.
So after that dive that you were on, where you heard those sounds, we've heard testimony in here that some acoustic sounds heard inside the submarine by the real-time monitoring system, which is an acoustic emission, right? Could be the frame shifting as opposed to the hull. So after you came up from the dive, was, did you partake in any meeting where the results of the real-time monitoring acoustic sensors were examined by the group and tried to isolate where the sound occurred?
I personally never saw any data from the real-time monitoring system. I didn't see the screen. I actually thought perhaps the whole system was a bit of a sham until the last couple of days' testimony. That information was not shared with me. He didn't think much of our, he didn't have me sign a waiver. And he never gave me a spiel about how everything's transparent and please ask any questions. It was just like, "You're here, let's go."
And did you understand that that hull, which we've used different terms for, we've used the term "prototype" and so forth, that hull, if it completed successful testing in the Bahamas, was intended to go out on a Titanic expedition following the completion of those tests in the Bahamas?
Yeah, I mean, that's why all those mission specialists were there. They were jonesing to go. He had everything lined up. And, I mean, that's related in my emails, trying to tell him that there was no... I remember conversations with him too around that time in the Bahamas in person, where I was still giving him the benefit of the doubt of, "Okay, maybe you've done enough testing, and you know it makes so much noise, and nobody's going to die." I kept trying to tell him, "You do not have a marketable product. You are going to get out there, and if you have four people plus yourself in there, and it's making things, anything like what we heard, one of those people is going to say, 'Hell, no, I want to go back to the surface.'" And where's, how's that a good business model? Like, now, you know? And then I also, things were not working on the sub properly on our dive. There was something wrong with the drop weights. There were issues with, we had plenty of issues. And, you know, any new vehicle is going to have issues. And the more unique and one-off it is, and the more things that you're doing that haven't been done before, the more issues you're going to have. Everything about this vehicle was, hadn't been done before. I mean, he, all the systems. He hated buying something off the shelf if he thought he could rig it together himself. And I also was making the point to him, from a businessman perspective, like, "What's your refund policy going to be?" Like, I mean, you, like, to me, it's very cut and dry. In my operation, you know, if I have to end a dive early, I tell my customers, I'm like, "You want the good news or the bad news?" Which is basically like, "We're going to have to go up, and the dive's ending short, but it was free." Like, I don't, you know, I could not have the reviews I have on TripAdvisor with his kind of business philosophy of, "Well, you'll get a credit for next year." Like, what the hell is that? And so it was obvious that he could not, he wasn't even going to have a 50% rate of dives without major issues. So when you're charging people six figures, how are you, just from a business perspective, the whole thing seemed completely premature.
So I wanted...
One moment, please, Mr. Fawcett. Ocean Gate, do you have a comment?
I'm just not sure what the question was.
Yes, it was, were you aware that the Titan submersible, if it successfully passed its testing regime in the Bahamas, if it was going out on the Titanic mission that year, once those tests were complete?
Yeah, and so that was my answer. I mean, this was a main point of contention and argument that I had with Stockton in person in the Bahamas, was from a business perspective, how are you going to keep delivering a partial product to a customer, and you're in the middle of the ocean, and, you know, you've already invested, you've already basically spent, it doesn't cost him any less if he has to end a dive early. He should really get everything figured out ahead of time and then take it out there.
So the first test dive in the Bahamas was only Mr. Rush?
I believe so. I wasn't there for that, but that's what I believe.
The second one is the dive you participated in?
I believe so.
When did you leave the Bahamas? Were you there for the completion of the test dives?
I'd have to look at my, I think I was there about a week.
Excuse me, Mr. Fawcett, is there a basis for saying that was the second dive? We can't actually look at the log? Or if Mr. Stanley knows if he was there for the entirety of the time that the Titan was in the Bahamas and knows which number dive his was?
Do you recall if you were on the second dive of the test hull of the Titan?
I believe that the dive previous to the one I was on was the one that Stockton did by himself.
Thank you. So Exhibit 85, or extracted emails between yourself and Mr. Stockton-Rush, would you agree with that statement?
Yes.
And we're looking at the year 2019. In the first email, I'd like you to take a moment, and Lieutenant Steele will pull up the first page, just for a general overview. But you've been provided the exhibit. If you'll take a minute, you sent an email on April, on April 18th, 2019, I believe, to Mr. Rush. Can you characterize generally the contents of that email and what your concerns were?
Do you have that exhibit, Ocean Gate?
Yes, the first email? And, but we are not, just to clarify, we're not using the exhibit just Mr. Stanley's characterization of what he said?
No.
Okay, we are, okay.
I'm asking him, in the interest of time, to characterize the contents of the email.
Could we take a 10-minute break?
Yes. They're hearing recess and reconvene at 1:50.
So that concludes the first half of Carl Stanley's testimony. As I am recording this voiceover for both halves at the same time, I will be saving a more in-depth breakdown for the next video. But just a few things regarding what we've heard so far. I think this is growing to possibly become the most fiery testimony since David Lockridge's, at least when discussion is directed towards Stockton-Rush. And I don't know if it's just me, but things also seemed a little cold between Mr. Stanley and the Coast Guard. I don't know, of course, but things just seemed a little off to me. Mr. Stanley did also come across to me as defensive in some of his answers, and there were times where he looked to be ready to say something else, but kind of stopped himself short. There is, of course, the obvious fact that he himself owns a company that operates an unclassed submersible. And while I won't be deviating that far for now from this Ocean Gate coverage, perhaps that will be a video for another time. I did just want to mention it, of course, though, as it does still add further depth to the Ocean Gate story, like, Mr. Stanley being a passenger aboard Titan in 2019, and being someone who had gone down a similar path himself, in terms of not gaining classification, for example, and also accepting tourists, the fact that he was shocked by the amount of noise that Titan was making says a lot about that first hull, and how he now views Stockton-Rush's behavior as abnormal and sick, who was aware of how dangerous the situation actually was and had little confidence in the sub. So I will, of course, speak more about Mr. Stanley's interactions with Ocean Gate and Stockton-Rush in the next video, when we've heard everything. But for now, as this video ends on a short interval, I'm eager to get the second half live, so we can have a full understanding of what was said. So I will keep this one short for now and not waste any more of your time than necessary. And as I said, I will be back in a day or two with Part Two. Thank you all, as ever, for watching and for bringing this channel to a milestone I never thought it would see. It truly is appreciated. Until next time, bye for now.